When they actually spend their time listening to this show, what does it mean? It means we're winning.
I see the same people every other day, but we never say hey, cause we're never looking the way. Or my face was in my notebook. We passed each other didn't look. These are the people of the towns, of the towns, the towns of the towns. And large cities are just a bunch of big, small towns, big, small towns. Overlapping side by side, big, small towns. I see new people every day. Everyone's on their way, doing the things that fill their day. And I'm going places too, doing the things that I do with my time. We are the people of the towns, of the towns, the towns of the towns. And large cities are just a bunch of big, small towns, big, small towns. Diagonal top to bottom, big, small town. Be nice to the people of the towns. Once in a while look around, cause what's going around is coming around. What came around is coming around. What's going around is coming around. Big, 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 small towns. Word gets around in the big, small towns. Big, 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 small towns. Word gets around in the big, small towns. Big, 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 small towns. Word gets around in the big, small towns.
Welcome to Down Ballot. We do the show live most Tuesdays at 7:30 PM Pacific, right here on Twitch, twitch.tv/echoplexmedia, except psych, we're not live this week. This is a pre-record. We have Sweet Haya coming into the studio and we need to do a bit of a sound check. So we're pre-recording Down Ballot. You can support this project at echoplexmedia.com. Just click that support tab. The best way to support this project is to pick up swag, fourth walls. Swag shop is amazing. And we've been actually making money on that, which is shocking. We never made any money on swag. I'm producer Dave and you can find me on Grindr.
I'll be looking for you there. This is the councilman. You can find me on Twitter at T H E underscore councilman, as long as Twitter still exists, although I might be heading over to Port 87 sometime soon. Oh, product placement. And today you can find me up in your business on the 18th floor of City Hall, trying to take over your property by eminent domain and eat all of your tortas. They're delicious.
That is good. We had a torta story last week.
It was fabulous, except it was sad. It was a sad torta. But it looks like things might work out for them. So we'll have more on that later. And a future episode of Down Ballot. So should we jump right into it?
Yeah. What do we have for leading off?
Well, it was an eventful week. As you know, the election will be certified soon, but we already know who our mayor elect in San Jose is going to be, Mr. Matt Mahan, AKA Evil Beto. And with his council seat vacated and then in the council seat of Sylvia Arenas, who got elected to the Board of Supervisors, also vacated in District Eight or the Evergreen area. We've got to have two vacancies in the city council. So the current council is going to try and figure out what to do about it. And they're getting themselves all tied up in a knot and we're going to learn more about it from NBC Bay Area.
Does. And the question is why, right? So the two big points raised were the cost of a special election, which the registrar's office said could run anywhere from $7.5 million to more than $11 million. The other point is that special elections have lower turnouts and thus might seem less democratic. There are a lot of people who weighed in until nearly midnight last night.
Oh no.
It was a heated meeting with hundreds of citizens speaking out, some from districts eight and 10, which are the ones with those open seats. Others spoke out urging the council to consider the long-term effects of appointing replacements rather than holding that special election to fill the vacancies. Again, one is in District Eight, the other is in District 10, the district of Mayor-elect Matt Mahan.
And so he will continue to lead our city and also represent District 10. Whereas my district that is almost always forgotten, will not have representation. And so with a special election, people are asking me to overlook that.
We don't have the luxury to say that cost doesn't matter.
Now, the vote to appoint goes against nearly three decades of precedent. The last time a council member was appointed was back in 1994. And then the next five vacancies were filled through special elections, according to the city clerk's office. The latest happened in 2014 during Mayor Sam Liccardo's term. Speaking after the vote last night, outgoing Mayor Sam Liccardo pointed out that the council members who all backed Mahan's opponent clearly don't know what the voters wanted based on the outcome of the election.
How ironic it is that this council would have the audacity to believe that they should appoint council members for these two districts. Despite the fact they got it pretty wrong only a few weeks before, at least in the view of the majority of the electorate. So yes, this is unprecedented. And I think it brings shame to our city.
Our mayor-elect Matt Mahan also sent us a statement after the vote saying the council got it wrong. Laura.
Laura.
We're going to hear, we'll hear that a lot in the next two years at least, if not 10, God help us all. The council got it wrong. Whine, 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 bitch and moan and complain. You know, nobody likes me. Everybody hates me. You don't even go here, bro. That's pretty much what you're hearing there from Sam Liccardo, basically channeling Matt Mahan at this point and trying to fluff his, his only friend in the council and, and support him because Sam is, is Matt's only friend in the council right now. And with the new council, there will be at least one ally for Matt, but not, not many. So this is more of what we're going to be looking at for a long time. There's a lot of this sanctimony and vitriol and back and forth, at least for the next two years, until we see if he's going to have a legit challenger in 2024, or if he'll just skate to reelection.
So yeah, so I don't know the answer. I didn't know that what was going to happen going forward is that Mahan was going to basically be the city council member for my district as well as for.
He won't. He won't. He'll just, he'll just be the mayor. Then, then you'll, your district will elect a new, you're in 10 now? You got redistricted?
I don't know. I don't know exactly.
I think you might be in 10 where you're at now. But yeah, I know you would. You'll get a new council member once they appoint, and then you'll have a chance to vote for that person or vote for someone else in 2024.
Oh, okay.
That was what was, that's, that was what was decided last night.
Oh, okay. Cool. Well.
Sylvia, Sylvia's comment was a little bit confusing and misleading because she's basically trying to say that Matt will still be on the city council, right? And he will have the ability to, as a District 10 resident, right? Represent his district, but he will be the mayor. You will have your own, if anything, it's you luck out because you got the mayor who's a resident of the district. Plus you're going to have a council member from that district. So you'll have two people in the council you could theoretically, you know, reach out to in a very personal way about their neighborhood and their community. So.
Yeah. Well, I don't feel like I lucked out. The one thing Liccardo said, oh, they clearly didn't know what the electorate wanted, but the election was so close that it's like half of the electorate wanted the other person.
Yes and no. I mean, in terms of typical council mayor races, it actually is pretty, pretty definitive when it came down to it. You know, you've seen, I've seen, there've been mayor's races here as recently as 20 odd years ago, where it was down to one or two points. And that was pretty much where Sam versus Dave was back in 2014. Much narrower, much narrower margin back then. Turnout was not the best, but it's never usually the best in these elections anyway. So, but man, won a pretty convincing election. You know, all things being, being equal. I don't think he has a mandate of any sort, and he certainly doesn't with the council. And the council at the end of the day, like they endorse the other person either because they liked the other person or they felt political allegiance to the other person, or because they just, in some cases, they absolutely did not like Mahan, right? Like Pam Foley, Dev Davis, these people would not endorse Cindy Chavez publicly unless they really despised the other guy. And that's pretty much what the case was. So it wasn't as though they were like trying to pick a winner. It was just more or predict who was going to win. And endorsement isn't a prediction of who's going to win. It's just who you want to win, right? It's who you're trying to help win. They weren't very helpful and that the endorsement of nine of the council members was not very helpful to Cindy Chavez at the final, in the final analysis. And maybe that kind of the point that Mahan was making was that she was the insider pick. So she played right into that. But yeah, it wasn't as though they were prognosticating and they lost, right? They made bet and they lost. And Sam really can't talk too much about endorsement track record because his endorsement track record is god fucking awful. Except in certain races where there's just, you know, the circumstances set up really well for him to be right. But he's usually not right and he usually doesn't have his finger on the pulse either. So he's, this is kind of like, you know, pot meat, the kettle, right?
You know, I, anyway, I'm actually kind of surprised now that you mentioned it, that Dev Davis did in fact endorse Mahan's opponent because he seems like, he seems more politically aligned with her, basic, based on what I know about her and her city politics. So it must be, it, it must be that, and I'm just guessing here. It must be that they view him, maybe, maybe a lot the same way that I do. Some tech bro who kind of came from nowhere, hasn't been involved in public service and came in and thought that he was going to run, run the roost because he's a rich guy.
Well, now he has an opportunity to, right? But yeah, it's very much a you don't even go here guy situation. They, I can tell you, like, I know I've had intimate conversations with them. They despise him. They do not like him. Like they have knives out for him. So yes, that was definitely that. I was equally shocked then that they, I could have seen someone like Dev Davis staying out of the race and not endorsing anybody, right? Certainly not endorsing Cindy, but she came out and publicly supported Cindy and made a point of saying, I'm not aligned with her, you know, we're not aligned politically all, most of the time. And I probably do align better with Matt Mahan politically, but I can't stand the guy. And he's, he's an ass and he can't build coalitions and we shouldn't elect people like that. So she went the other way. So it was, it was pretty shocking that that happened. But again, it played right into Matt Mahan's narrative that Cindy was the old guard, the establishment, right? You know, old news, we need change. And she's, she's, you know, it's, she's corrupt. She's supported by backroom deals, right? And then what did Cindy turn around and do? Get all the endorsements from the council and then made a big, big, big freaking deal about it. And almost every mailer and everything she sent out after that was endorsed by the entire city council, except for the, her opponent, right? But if anything, I mean, it's, it's what you do. I don't know what, I don't know what else you do. If you get the entire city council to endorse you, that's pretty fantastic, frankly. Any other election. Like so many things that happened in the 2016 presidential. So any other election, that's enough to get you a win, right? That's, but in this election with the narrative that was already established by her opponent, it played right into it. And I think it did backfire on her, unfortunately.
Yeah, I don't know. I would have, I wish I would have been advising her campaign because I would have turned, I would have turned Matt Mahan into Peter Thiel. Like I literally would have turned Matt Mahan into Peter Thiel, like during the course of the campaign.
They very much tried. Like that was the narrative they tried to establish. They just didn't do a very good job of it. Like the messaging was really confusing and misleading and, and just, and not really on point, right? It really didn't have that. It wasn't coordinated. It wasn't coherent. It just, they were thinking, there were just attacks all over the place. Like they put, pretty much pulled up a couple of his tweets and tried to make like eight mailers out of it. And there was no narrative established about exactly what you're saying, like, you know, painting this guy for who he was. So he got to define himself and he got to define her and no one ever bothered to define him as anything other than what he said. They just said, oh, you don't go here or you know, he's new, he's, he's inexperienced, right? And that's exactly what he meant, that he would say, exactly. Yes. I'm not a, I'm not a career politician. I have experience in all these other areas that would really benefit our city. And maybe what we need is not a career politician anymore. We need someone who has that fresh perspective. And that campaign's been waiting to be run, that, that segment of the electorate has been waiting to be tapped. It's a very broad segment of the electorate. It includes Democrats. It includes independents. It includes Republicans. And it's very dangerous because it looks and feels like, you know, moderate Democrat, you know, even somewhat progressive. But the undertone and what's actually going to be happening at City Hall is going to be very conservative and very concerning and very tech bro-y, Trumpian in a way, if you will. So I think we really need to get our hackles up and be vigilant the next two years at least, and find a candidate who can beat him in two years.
And, and the other, the other thing is there's a way in which I'm out of touch because most people don't know who the hell Peter Thiel is.
Right, right. And that, and see, when it comes to electoral politics, it takes, you know, they say it takes six or seven touches, you know, with a voter to get them from not knowing anything to voting for you, right? And that includes, you know, signs, calls, mailers, online ads, whatever you want to, you know, talk about, TV ads, people knocking on your door. And the fact that it takes that much just to sort of basically introduce yourself and say hello and say, I'm running for this and get someone to want to support you, making that, you know, selling that narrative and building that narrative, it takes so much more time too, right? And energy and money and resources. You have to, you have to get that in front of people. Because people like you and me and people on the inside, we, we all get that. We can understand that right away. But you're like your quote unquote, average voter, if we want to go there. Just doesn't have that baseline of knowledge and that's not their fault and it's not bad thing either. Like they're probably better off. But it, it, it takes that extra level of explanation or it takes a real special messenger, like someone like you, for example, who can put this, put something like that into quote unquote, layman's, layperson's terms, right? Like can speak to the people in a way where you can explain these complex narratives, but in a way that they understand. And that's what the Republicans do really well on national scale. A lot of times is really simplifying, encapsulate things and don't use wonky policy speak. They use real people talk and they explain things to real people, the way they will understand them.
Even, even if they're, even if they're incorrect.
Correct. And you know, Matt Mahan is a Harvard grad, like went to, you know, lived in the same dorm as Zuckerberg, right? Bellarmine grad, you know, he's a smart, smart ass, better than dumbass, I guess, but he's a smart ass. And yet his campaign rhetoric, it wasn't highly elevated. It wasn't like, you know, it wasn't really wonky. It was really straightforward, right? We need change. The people in charge are corrupt. We need accountability. And we need common sense, right? Like it was very straightforward and, and stuff that everyone could understand.
So I would have been, on second thought, it would have been better to paint him as Mark Zuckerberg.
Yeah.
That's somebody who everyone knows.
It resonates a lot better, right? That his name's on a fucking hospital, right? So yeah, exactly.
You'd be like, you'd be like, you put up, you put up a quote and you go, is this Matt, is that Matt Mahan or Mark Zuckerberg? And you put up a Zuckerberg quote, then you put up a Mahan quote and you go, which one is which? Is this, which one's the Mark Zuckerberg quote and which one's the Matt Mahan quote?
Right. But he plays the narrative really well. And he, in this particular instance, you know, he, he fomented all those people you saw at city council, they all, like there was a bus that brought some of them there to City Hall. There was a, he, he hosted a rally. Mahan hosted a rally in the plaza beforehand that was publicized by Liccardo, right? And attended by all their friends. And they fomented this crowd into a frenzy, thinking that they were going to, they were having their democratic rights to vote like revoked, right? Like there was never going to be another election in District Eight or 10, like there's going to appoint someone and that's it. And they were, they were, you know, pretty much robbing these people of their constitutional rights. When everything they did and everything, all the options they had on the table were all constitutional and all legal and all fine under the charter. And there's going to be a time and a place to elect, for people to elect their representative, right? So no one's getting disenfranchised, but that's what they were sold. And they do a very good job of selling that narrative and, and getting people to show up and believe in the narrative and reiterate it and regurgitate it. And these are the kind of things that win and sway local elections. Things as small as, as one little issue like this can sway local elections. There was even talk, producer Dave, from the, the crowd who were pissed off at them for pushing for an appointment. More than one person, many, many people in fact, and even the mayor referenced that people might go out and gather signatures for recall of any of the, you know, of the people who get appointed. Although I don't know if that's legal or possible. Or of the council members who voted for the appointment in the first place, right? Even though, even though a lot of them are terming out, like at least two or three of them are terming off the council. So they won't even be around.
This is the Shasta County-ification of the whole world.
Yeah, pretty much. So, so we'll see what happens. I don't know that they're actually going to be able, it, it could be one of those things where there's a lot of talk and not much happens, but like with the Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors recall and that kind of thing. So we'll see if people actually get out there and gather signatures. But I do, I can tell you this, I work for one of, to be undisclosed, one of the council members who is terming out and received a call today from a constituent who said they will, that the council member will not be getting their vote in the future because they, they took away their democratic rights. So we said, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, cool. You're right. Let's move on. Let's move on to winners and losers here. Let's, uh, yeah. We've been on, we've been on this, we've been on this story for a while and you know, you and, you and I are, anyone listening to this knows like you and I are, they know what we kind of think about the mayor's election and Evil Beto. So strangely enough, the opening story on winners and losers is actually a good story.
It is, isn't it? It's not so, not so bad after all. But yeah, and I wanted to get to that story on leading up because we normally would put that under Down Ballot and I didn't want to take it lost this week. So, but yeah. It's, it's just a really interesting story to me. So we'll find out if there are any losers in it, but it might be just some winners. We'll find out.
A group of homeowners in Los Altos fed up with their local internet provider is taking matters into their own hands. They have created their own fiber optic network that now gets speed up to 10 gigabytes per second. That is faster than what any other major internet provider is offering. KTVU South Bay reporter La Monica Peters, live in Los Altos tonight after speaking with the person, La Monica, who spearheaded the program. Scott Vanderlip says Comcast wanted to charge him $17,000 to install fiber optic cables so he could have faster service, but he said no. Instead, he got together with his neighbors, created a co-op so that they could share costs and found another company to provide internet service.
We in Silicon Valley here, Los Altos Hills, people are still on satellite or point-to-point microwave. They are having to live with basically internet never arrived for them.
Since April 2019, Los Altos Hills Community Fiber has been providing high-speed internet service to its 45 subscribers through Next Level Networks. Now they can upload and download large files faster and they have one of the fastest residential speeds in the country.
So this is a pilot project and Next Level has started rolling it out for us. And they've actually already launched multiple other community-owned and operated fiber optic co-ops, right? You know, in Woodside, a project up in Santa Cruz Mountains and up in San Jose with HOAs and everything else.
Next Level Networks, which provides the fiber optic internet service, was founded by Daryl Gentry. He says broadband, community-owned internet service is the wave of the future.
We charge a modest fee for operating the network on their behalf. And we are optionally the internet service provider. And I say optionally because it's actually an open access architecture. So that means multiple ISPs can actually coexist and compete over the fiber infrastructure. It doesn't have to be us.
Right now, the internet service in.
Do you know what that means?
Is about $155 a month and the price will go down when more people subscribe to share the operational cost. Installation costs can range from $2,000 to $13,000 per home.
We don't want people to think that this is an example or this is how it would look. We want this to go into communities that are mid-level, you know, affordable communities, all the way down. And there are lots of ways that that will actually occur, but that's our mission, to improve broadband and make sure there's fiber service everywhere possible.
Next Level Networks says that they are also in talks with an out-of-state agency to provide this internet service to low-income units that the agency bills and already owns. La Monica Peters, KTVU Fox Two News.
So when he said that the, what they're, what they're saying is he's laid the fiber down, right? And anyone that can connect to his network can provide you your internet, assuming that they have the infrastructure to do so. That's what he meant when he said that other people can ride, basically ride on their fiber. Mind you, they're, the people that can ride on the fiber do have to pay his, his company like rent on it, right?
Right, right.
But that's good, actually. That's what should be happening. And the, the fees there seemed very high, but you have, people have to understand that where they are, the, the runs from house to house, the runs from the junction box are going to be pretty far because of the kind of location it is. It's not dense. It's a bunch of rich people, so they can afford it. And that's, you know, that is what it is. But.
Well, what about this, what about this proposal? You know, he's, the, the company sounds altruistic. They're going to take the broadband to the people and the, take the, take the fiber to the people.
So and it's like you and, you and me live in like kind of medium dense suburbs, right? Like suburban kind of areas of San Jose. I think my area is exactly.
R1 or R2 housing, yeah.
Yeah, exactly as dense as your area. So the cost for the installation where we are would probably be almost nothing because they would have to run 100 feet of fiber. Whereas in these places, they might be running half a mile, a mile of fiber to get to somebody's home. And they have to deal with all kinds of shit, like they have to deal with, are they crossing someone else's property? Are they getting permission for that? Are they able to run it along the power lines? Does the power company let them do that? Or the power line's underground? Well, you can't really do that there. And so. So that's one thing, but in like your neighborhood, let's say, let's say you just live in neighborhood B. They put, they put a few junction boxes in and then they're running, they're running 100 feet, 200 feet and then cutting a hole in your wall and plugging the fiber in and plugging a modem in your installation cost is going to be 100 bucks. Or maybe they'll even be able to do it free. If enough of you are signing up, they might do the installation for free because they'll eat that and then they'll, they'll make it back when they charge you a monthly fee. Also, when there's density, the monthly fee will be low. Where I lived in Campbell, I had fiber, I had fiber, fiber available to me up to five gigabit, which was half as fast as that, which is smoking fast, right? I didn't opt for that, but even the five gigabit would have been around 100 bucks a month with free installation because of, and it's, because that's the first place that AT&amp;T rolled out fiber because it's one of the densest places. Where, one of the densest places in the South Bay where there would be a demand for such service.
Yeah. We've actually heard from both this neighborhood and where I grew up, which are older neighborhoods from, you know, either mid to early 20th century homes and tracks. We've actually been told by AT&amp;T that they, like, we're not in their plans. They're, we're not, there's no chance they're, they're getting fiber anytime soon. So what you got is what you get from us, pretty much. So in that situation, you, could a company like this come in and use existing infrastructure to lay fiber or would they have to lay it from wherever the nearest sort of fiber hub is?
That, that.
Excuse my language. I don't know what I'm talking about.
They would have to basically do what they did up in, where was this? Woodland again? Los Altos.
Woodside or Los Altos Hills, Los Altos Hills, yeah.
But the difference is to get it there would be cheaper. Because it's not up in the hills. They would have, there would just be a shorter run from wherever they're getting it. Same with here. It would just be cheaper. And if more, the more people jump on the network, the cheaper the service becomes. You're not, you're not like at the, at the, like sort of at the hub end, you're paying for just a big fat fucking pipe, right? And so, I mean, these, these backbone pipes that are being laid are just unreasonable amounts of, amounts of bandwidth, both up and down. And so adding more houses to it, you're not, you know, you're not, you're not slowing the thing down by doing it. And so, you know, if your neighborhood wanted to get together and do it, it would take some time and it would cost a lot of money upfront. But, but like eventually your bill would probably be lower than it is now and you'd have just unreasonably fast internet. It's unfortunate that AT&amp;T isn't, you know, putting fiber into these residential neighborhoods. It seems that, and I think the, it's just density, you know?
Yeah. Well, it's, it's paying for their buck, right? They're going to, they're going to, they're making business decisions too, even though they could, they might be able to squeeze more money out of these affluent communities. It's going to cost them more to do the work, to actually build the infrastructure, right? Where they can do it easily, easier in newer neighborhoods, denser neighborhoods and make a good amount of money off of, you know, the folks that are already.
Not for nothing, you know, within a two-minute walk of where I live, there are two different complexes with over 100 units in them. And so that may, you know, there's no shocker that that's one of the first places in the Santa Clara County where this fiber was rolled out.
Right.
Because it not only were these dense areas, but these are desirable neighborhoods where people move and the rent's kind of high. So people are going to want this faster internet. Plus, the thing that AT&amp;T did, that the reason they're not rolling it out in your neighborhood is that they're advertising these incredibly low rates. And so if they were advertising as low as instead of, you know, you know, 300 up, 300 down is 55 bucks, if they were just advertising, it could be as low as, and then depending on, basically depending on how dense your neighborhood is, it could be as low as this. And, but they don't want to say that.
Right.
They don't want the people, they don't want the people in the single-family homes to be like, what do you mean?
Of course not.
But this is good. It sounds like on the surface, like this is, you know, a bunch of rich people got mad, but that's what happened. And I think that, you know, if this works in a sparse area, it's going to work in a denser area like where you or I live. It's not going to happen tomorrow. It's not going to happen in the next year or two, but eventually somebody's going to come in because it's not that far from where you live or from where I live to like a place where you could just plug into just, just fucking absolutely unreal amounts of bandwidth.
Yeah, that's what, that's what the dude said. They're looking to get into more affordable communities and more, more low-income communities and denser communities. So hopefully let's, let's get it done. Let's get it done, tech bro.
Yeah. Where's Matt Mahan on this? Where's Matt Mahan on this?
I think he was in the background in that video. I couldn't, I couldn't quite see. I saw a lot of white dudes. So it was dark though.
Did you know that, bro, if you're rich and you live in the hills, you can just make your own internet, bro?
That's fabulous. Fabulous. Um, well, in Woodside, the houses are even further fucking apart than Los Altos Hills. So I can't imagine what that would cost. But those are people like, but that is Peter Thiel and John Thompson and those kind of people who are making Uber dollars.
Right. And, yeah, and like, you know, the installation fee of, you know, 13 grand was in Los Altos Hills was probably for the farthest person, right? The person who is either the furthest out or even just has the largest property that they have to run this fiber across. There's rules and regulations about running this kind of stuff. It's not like, it's not, there's no electricity on it, but you still have to follow the rules when you, when you run these, these, these lines. And so
Well, you know who's, you know who's going to need one? SJPD because they're going to get so many fucking complaints on this transparency portal that, you know, their shit's going to crash if they don't have, have I have?
As you know, police accountability has come under the spotlight in recent years. Today, San Jose launched a new way for people to track complaints made against police. The goal is to make the process more transparent. Here's NBC Bay Area's Ian Cole.
This is the new web portal where anyone can quickly look up and view complaints against San Jose police officers that were investigated by the city's independent police auditor.
San Jose is taking a significant step forward in our public safety journey today.
The mayor says while state laws require cities provide the records, San Jose is going above and beyond to make it accessible.
I think the reality is we know there are those few who violate our principles, our laws, and for that reason, we need to have accountability. And this is one of many tools.
If you just want to select an officer-involved shooting, you'll simply select this year.
Now, anyone could go on the independent police auditor's website and look up records by date, incident type, or even by officer's name. It includes cases of officer-involved shootings and great bodily injury between 2014 and 2020, though cases continue to be uploaded. One of those police shootings was on July 4th, 2016. The portal shows the notes and records made by the police auditor. That case ended with a jury awarding $2.6 million to the family. But will any of this help improve policing?
I have to say, I don't know. We did see some significant change in officer behavior after body worn camera was made available, at least to my office and to defense attorneys and to the DA. It may be that we see something similar, but it's too early to tell.
Next year, the portal will include records of officers accused of engaging in biased or discriminatory behavior, conducting unlawful arrests or searches, using excessive force, or failing to report other officers who used such force.
I strongly encourage other departments and municipalities to follow the lead of San Jose. Public safety is not merely providing services. It also involves robust oversight mechanisms overseeing the delivery of those services.
The auditor says it only includes complaints made by her office and urges people who feel they've been wronged by police to file reports so she can investigate. In San Jose, Ian Cole, NBC Bay Area News.
This is actually pretty good.
Interesting. We shall see if it's useful. Did you, I enjoyed the two young ladies in the background of that press conference who just didn't look like they wanted to be there at all and got dragged in on their lunch hour to like stand in the background. Always love that.
I, the one thing that is weird is that it's only complaints that have been investigated. So
Sure.
It like, it leaves out complaints that haven't been investigated. So I think that maybe an expansion of this, where there would be
Perhaps.
Like a couple of tiers where these complaints haven't been investigated and maybe the, maybe even the public would then be able to be like, well, I, you know, people are, they start spreading like information about a complaint and they're like, well, why hasn't anybody looked into this complaint? And then maybe it would cause more complaints to be investigated.
Most of, as far as I know, most of the IPA complaints, I mean, they're, they're investigated in as much as they're followed up upon, right? Like they don't get a complaint and it just sits there like, oh, that can't be valid. They look into it. They do the basic, a basic investigation to determine validity or not. And with, in the case of IA, internally, they have a, I forget what the phrase is for it, but upheld or sustained or something like that complaint. And they don't generally sustain a whole lot of them. The IPA has a different standard, but they also don't have any teeth and they can't actually discipline officers. But they will issue reports and invest, they investigate quote unquote every complaint they get. It's just a question of how deep an investigation goes based on, you know, the specifics of the case and what they're able to uncover. So every, as far as I know, every complaint gets investigated or at least flagged and whatever, I'm hoping whatever information from those investigators or flags can be brought up in this dashboard. But I do, you know, I also push back on the whole, you know, there's a few folks who violate our values and break our laws. It's like, well, yeah, if they break our laws, I mean, shouldn't they not meet police officers maybe?
Well, if they're breaking, I mean, if I break the law, you break the law and they catch us, you know what happens to us?
We go to jail.
Well, depending on what law it was. Yeah, we, well, we, we face the criminal consequences of breaking the law, be it a fine or jail time or, you know, in extreme cases, you know, other things.
So they're implying that this is not going to happen and that accountability won't happen without a public-facing dashboard where people can look up, you know, and find out about these things and be like, oh, wait, this guy has like three complaints against him, you know, what's going on there? Oh, no, this guy broke the law. He should be fired. And, oh, he's gonna, yeah, you're right. We should fire him, random citizen who looked at our dashboard. You want to count, you're the mayor, you know, have accountability, you know, find out who's breaking the law and fucking fire them and get them prosecuted. Like that's not
He's on, he's on his way out and I feel like
Oh, sure.
I feel like if evil Beto is good at anything, it's probably getting people fired. So
Yeah. Well, no, he's, this is all, this is just another legacy piece that he's passing on to evil Beto. And you'll notice the gentleman who spoke is from MOTI, right? Someone might be wondering what the hell is MOTI if you're, happen to be watching this on, you know, YouTube or whatever. MOTI is the Mayor's Office of Technology and Innovation, something that current mayor created and evil Beto would more likely inherit. So, yeah, they're like peas in a pod, those two. So it's just going to be more of the same for the next, you know, two to 10 years. Yay.
Well, our next story is about a business. It's a downtown San Jose feed store. That's
Yeah.
I'm surprised
Things change.
Um, yeah, times change. I'm surprised it's been there. I'm surprised. I didn't even know about this. Let's see what the local news has to say about it.
Ten, a long-time San Jose business is closing its doors at the end of the month after nearly four decades. Sam's Downtown Feed is an agriculture and pet supply store. KTVU South Bay reporter La Monica Peters talked to the owner. She's live tonight. That building, La Monica, I mean, that's been there for some time, a staple.
Yes, that's right, Mike. This building has been here since 1913 and it still has its original brick walls. The Blackfords bought it back in 1986 and they say now is the right time to close it down for, for good.
Is the emotion from our customers finding out that we're closing? It's really hard. It makes you not want to close.
Though Sam's Downtown Feed remained open throughout the pandemic, co-owner Lisa Blackford says her husband Sam's health challenges and a desire to spend more time with family is now their priority.
You know, owning your own business stresses the family life a little bit. And we have grandkids now and our kids are older with families and we'd like to be able to spend more time with them and know that we can. So, and we're getting older.
The feed store is well-known for carrying products that you can't get anywhere else in the Bay Area. Their biggest selling items are chicken feed and hey,
Here's some monkey food here.
But if you also need to feed your monkey, llama, or tortoise, Sam's was the place to find it.
And we have accounts with the zoo, this Happy Hollow, and various 4H clubs and future farmers of Americas. They all come here and buy everything, all their food from here.
The Blackford family has had a long legacy in San Jose since the late 1800s. Lisa says the store has a secret bar in the basement from the prohibition era and the city's red light district was nearby. She says selling the store is their best option, but the land it sits on is also up for sale, making the building's future uncertain.
The demographics with high-density housing, I think will inhibit people from, you know, continuing to have chickens and rabbits in their backyard and things like that. So we'll see.
Another unique thing about Sam's is the agricultural or farming field that, that they have inside. Lisa says they still have no computers or internet service there and it's something that customers seem to appreciate and will miss. Mike?
An old classic staple there in the South Bay, 36 years, quite the run. La Monica Peters live in San Jose. La Monica, thank you.
That you, oh, I just made a mistake. That's okay. That, uh, the fact there used to be a speakeasy in there is super cool.
That's interesting as hell. I'm surprised that there's not some sort of historical aspect to that that would prevent the, you know, the building from being redeveloped or at least make it a lot harder to redevelop the building. I was aware of this, but you know.
That could, that could end up happening.
That, oh, yeah. The redevelopment, yes. I don't know about the historical nature. If they want to, if someone wants to apply for it, I think there's a way you could incorporate that into a new development. But yeah, no, that area is, it's part of what's called an urban village, which means it's going to be, you know, it's slated in the general plan for redevelopment into denser, higher, you know, construction, whether that's residential mostly or a commercial or a hotel, but mostly residential along that corridor. So the stuff you see across the street from it now, that new development, the 808 or whatever it is and others, it'll look a lot like that more than likely down the road, but not anytime soon. But at this point, you know, property owner sell, the property gets redeveloped, you know, 10, 12 years down the line. But closures like this are happening across San Jose. We're seeing a lot of displacement in our small businesses because of just the winds of change, unfortunately.
I want to open a nightclub there. If it used to be a speakeasy, how cool would that be?
I mean, you could talk, we could talk to whoever buys it and wants to redevelop it. I think that'd be a really awesome way to activate the space and to call back on the history and also build something new at the same time, right? So yeah, let's, let's talk to them. We could, we, let's get a business plan together and we'll go to them and we'll, we'll go to, we'll go to the folks at Haberdasher, right, or used to do Single Barrel. We have a legit speakeasy you can move into. Help us start a, help us start a legit speakeasy with passwords and everything and secret handshakes and non-alcoholic drinks with lots of fizz in them.
Or non-alcoholic drinks. Yes, non-alcoholic drinks.
I would like a drink with an umbrella in it, please.
So this next story, I think that, I think that I'm not going to be outraged by this next story, but I think that a lot of regular people will be. And I don't think I'm going to, I don't think I really want to give it any lead in. Let's just let KTVU Fox 2 tell us what happened at Dublin. Was it FCI? Is that Federal Correctional Institution? Is that right?
Correct.
That's a federal prison in Dublin.
Yes, federal pound you in the ass prison. Yes.
It's, if it's a federal prison, it's, that is, it's not that kind of place. I believe, actually, I believe the one in Dublin's a woman's prison.
Oh, nasty. I like it.
Anyway, let's, let's let the news, let's let the news talk about it here.
The former warden at the all-women's federal prison in Dublin took the witness stand for a second day in a row. He is accused of sexually abusing women jailed at the facility. KTVU's Evan Stornowski has been following his testimony, joins us in the newsroom with the latest. Evan?
Yeah, Christina, Ray Garcia faced tough questions from the prosecution while under cross-examination. He vehemently denied all of the accusations from those numerous women who were in his custody.
Former Dublin federal prison warden Ray Garcia took the witness stand in his own defense Friday for the second day. He's one of five officials at the prison charged with numerous sex crimes.
I don't find his story credible or believable.
Garcia faces eight counts of abusing women at the prison. He retired in 2021 after being placed on leave. Susan Beatty is an attorney advocating for victims in the Dublin prison sex abuse scandal.
We believe the survivors. We believe the stories that they told in this court, that they've told consistently for months and years.
Garcia was defiant and even combative under cross-examination. And when asked about taking naked pictures of an inmate, he had a convoluted explanation. Garcia said he thought the inmate might have drugs inside a cell and took a picture without realizing she was naked on all fours. He said he took a second naked photo to document her misconduct. Garcia then uploaded the images on his personal computer at home and never told a soul about them.
It's totally not believable.
Tess Court is a former guard at the Dublin prison. She's been in court following her former boss's trial.
He accidentally took the picture. That warden doesn't make accidents like that. He doesn't make mistakes like that.
Garcia told the jury he was going to use the photos in a discipline report against the inmate, but didn't after the woman turned into an informant. The prosecution said he took the photos to get aroused. He replied, quote, "I have plenty of pictures I can use for arousal of free women. I can see any day of the week. I do not need a picture of an inmate to arouse me." What are you going to do when they ask about all those pictures of your genitals? Garcia will still have to explain why he had hundreds of pictures of his own genitals on his work phone that he's accused of showing to inmates.
Christina, he needed a second opinion.
Back on the witness stand next week to take more questions from the prosecution. Reporting live in the newsroom, Evan Stornowski, KTVU Fox 2 News.
Evan, before we let you go here, you've been in court, I've been in court last, earlier this week as well. What do you think the jury is thinking here? I know it's kind of hard to suggest or kind of guess, assume what they're, what they're thinking, but in terms of his testimony, how he's coming across?
He's coming across, Christina, very combative and part of taking the witness stand is really selling yourself as a defendant. And he's been arguing defiant and combative with the prosecution the entire time. So my, my assumption is they're not thinking he is the nicest guy in the world, which may not help his case.
All right. Evan Stornowski in our newsroom. Evan, thank you.
Okay. So I thought that was going to be a completely different story based on the thing that you put up.
Oh.
On there. Explain, I thought you were, were going to be like, oh, you explain all these naked pictures on your, on your computer or whatever. And he's like, I have naked pictures, but they were of inmates.
Yeah, yeah. I didn't quite know what it was about either until we, until it ran. So, and you were correct, a women's prison. Very good, very astute, very knowledgeable. I like it. I don't, I mean, getting to the story itself, I don't buy that story for a second either. Like, no, oh, I slipped and fell into your cell and took a naked picture of you. And then, oh, I took another one. It's like, how does that help your argument to be like, well, I didn't realize I took a naked picture of you. So I took another one and then I posted them online or on my computer and I downloaded them and I didn't bother to look and see that you were in the picture naked, on all fours. Okay.
And at the end, like, he had pictures of his own junk on the, on his work phone. I'm like, well, whatever. And he's like, oh, you were showing it to the inmates? I'm like, oh, yikes.
No, he needed a second opinion. He's like, is this a wart or is it something else? Should I be concerned? He looks irregular around the margins.
Yikes.
This, you know what I'm saying?
Unless the news is just doing a hatchet job on this guy, which they don't tend to do on people like wardens. This guy's fucked.
Yeah, I know. It sounds like he's not the most well-liked person and he's not really equipping himself very well and not really like doing, doing himself any favors at this point, regardless of whether he's innocent, guilty, or somewhere in between, which is pretty much all of us. He's guilty, he's definitely guilty of putting up a really bad image and public image. Apparently he's pissing off the jury and you don't want to do that. Definitely don't want to do that.
The, up until like this point in the, the trial, it must not have been going very well either. Cause you, they don't put the defendant on the stand very often unless it's like a hail Mary, right?
Sure. Well, yeah, I mean, although, I mean, from, I don't, I don't like to judge a book by its cover, but it looks like the attorney is a buddy of his or something. So I'm guessing just, you know, he needed someone with a law degree to, or a law license to actually, you know, represent him in court. But I'm guessing it's just a, you know, I want to do this. Okay. I want to, I want to testify. Okay.
All right. Your checks are clear and so whatever.
Yeah, right. Uh, rough. Anyway, well, from that to, you know, the, you know, the warden's computer being a very dangerous place. Apparently Twitter, have you heard this? Twitter is like, I don't know, there's, there's people on Twitter who are not nice.
Oh, yeah. I'm actually one of them.
Oh, wow. Okay.
But maybe not the ones that they're talking about in this story.
Yeah, I don't think so, man. Like I, we can watch, but I, it was news to me. I thought Twitter was the sweetest place on earth.
The decision to leave Twitter has been weeks in the making, according to Santa Clara County District Attorney Jeff Rosen, especially since Twitter's new ownership under Elon Musk.
I noticed an explosion of hate speech and racism and antisemitism.
I noticed an explosion of hate speech and racism and antisemitism on the Twitter platform. That really started me thinking as to why my office and the taxpayers and the people that I represent in this wonderful diverse community, why I'm using a platform that is making money by getting eyeballs to look at things that are racist and antisemitic.
Rosen placing the blame on Musk.
The straw that broke the camel's back was the owner of Twitter posting a well-known antisemitic and racist meme, Pepe the Frog.
Grant Keen, a professor of communication at CSU East Bay, points to numbers that show a rise in antisemitic and racist tweets isn't imagined.
The New York Times has reported on the weekend that racist slurs against African Americans have more than tripled since Musk took over. There are 60% more antisemitic tweets. There are twice the number of hate tweets against gay people.
He says that along with a rise in fake accounts, the rhetoric puts agencies like the DA's office at risk on a platform that had been useful to them.
Some of it has to do with the principles that these agencies and departments are sworn to uphold, and they're just not confident that they can fulfill their mandate, fulfill their mission with the way that things are going right now on the platform.
So far Musk has not issued any response to Rosen's move, but last week he disputed claims that hate speech has risen since he took over Twitter. For now, Rosen says he's calling on other DAs to also leave Twitter.
I have other ways to communicate with the public through radio, through television, through other social media, and using the Twitter platform is not necessary.
Well, um, I don't know.
I have to, I have to agree with him there. I mean, there are plenty of other platforms you can use. Um, I don't know if radio is the right one these days, but with certain populations, absolutely. Um, I don't know, what are your thoughts on, on Twitter as, as a, as now the owner and founder of a Twitter competitor?
Well, Port 87 is part of a federation of competition. It's an open source distributed network called Mastodon.
I see.
Or it's actually not Mastodon, it is, oh, I forget the name of the thing. Mastodon is the big like client everyone's using. It's the software we're using, but, um, unless he was just going to go on there and clap back against some of the racists, which I think would probably be a waste of his time, I could see like, like the very last guy said, hey, you know, the DA's office is supposed to be impartial. They're supposed to be operating in non-racist ways. I would suggest that a DA's office might be, might, should, uh, operate in an anti-racist way, but we're not there. We, we'll do, we'll do the non-racist, we'll do the non-overtly racist for now. Um, you know, I don't think Jeff Rosen's running for anything right now. Um, and as far as I know, we've never, we've never talked much about him being particularly politically ambitious for the future. Um, I don't know about that. I don't know if that's the case, but it hasn't come up for us on this show. And so I think, I think maybe this is just genuinely what he thinks is best for him in the DA's office and that's, uh, that's up to him. And I think that, uh, you know, the, the stats don't lie. Um, you know, a lot of people went on there because Elon said, oh, you know, we're going to bring free speech back. And a lot of people went on there to test the boundaries and that's sort of what happened when he took over. A lot of those accounts did get suspended because they were breaking other rules. They weren't breaking hate speech rules. They were breaking like directly harassing individuals rules, which even, even Elon Musk's Twitter will take you down for if you're doing like a coordinated harassment campaign, although maybe not if you work for the Daily Wire. But, um, that's, that's a whole different matter for a whole different podcast. I think that, you know, it's a good call and I don't think that it's, you know, I don't think that it's, that he, he seemed genuine. Uh, Jeff Rosen has always seemed fairly like a genuine guy, a decent guy who wants to do a good job. You know, he is in a position where he's prosecuting people and a lot of times those prosecutions aren't, you know, just or the outcomes aren't right, but that's more a function of the system that he operates in. I think that, uh, yeah, I just, I don't, I don't think he did it to pander to anybody. I, because I just don't see him really trying, he's not going to run for governor anytime soon, right? He's not gonna, I don't think he's going to run for state senator or state, you know. I mean, he might one day want to be the attorney general for the state of California, but I don't, you know, we don't hear any noises from him about doing that. So.
It's just, well, it's not available right now to him. He, he certainly is open to it. He was, uh, he made himself available for the appointment when the seat was opened, um, after, uh, got him forgetting now Javier Becero was, uh, put into the cabinet, um, but it was eventually given to Rob Bonta. Um, he, he definitely has some sort of either political aspirations or just, you know, aspirations of grandeur and, and making himself out to be, you know, and his legacy out to be more than really it was, um, and really establishing a legacy. I don't know. I mean, it's, it seems genuine to who he is. He hasn't really changed. Um, he's not as progressive as some progressives would like. He's not as conservative as conservatives would like. He's somewhere in the middle. He's a, you know, happy-go-lucky dude, it seems like, but he certainly does like to make, uh, you know, press hits and make a splash and get his name out there. Whether he's running for something or not, he did just get reelected this last year in June, uh, you'll recall against Sajid Khan and David, Daniel Chung. Um, but Jeff got more than 50% of the vote and, you know, didn't have to run in, uh, in November. Um, so he's reelected to another four years. And yeah, I think he could be looking at AG down the line. That's something that I think he, he would aspire to, um, or some other, uh, some other kind of position. Maybe it's not even an elected position, right? Sometimes you're angling for, uh, an appointment to some position at some point because, um, you've, you've built up your resume. Um, anyway, uh, so we'll see what, what Jeff does next, but, um, yeah, I think this is just an easy win for him to come out and say like, you know, Twitter's bad, I'm leaving Twitter because everyone else is right. It, it just keeps his name in the, in the press, keeps us talking about him and saying he's, you know, he's, he's, he's right, you know, he's a good guy. You should get off Twitter.
Um, so, you know, I don't know what I would, I don't know what I would do. Like I, I can't leave Twitter because of this, this thing we're doing right now. Like I can't. It would be, it would be a bad idea, right, for me to leave Twitter. Um, I don't have a big following or whatever, but I do, I do find guests, I find co-hosts, I network with other creators on there. I'm able, I've been able to have academics and journalists on the show as a result of, you know, them having followed me on Twitter and us having become, you know, sort of like, I don't know, digitally acquainted in some kind of way or whatever. But I, I don't know if my position was something else, if I might not also be considering uh, leaving Twitter. So, you know, it's, it's kind of a case by case basis. I don't, I certainly don't think.
I work in this space.
I certainly don't think journalists and content creators should be leaving right now because they're just shooting themselves in the foot by doing it. And that's basically the thing that's going to prop Twitter up, e- even as it gets really bad. If it gets really bad, or if Elon gets bored with it and finds something else shiny and appoints like a regular ass person to be the CEO, which is what I think is going to happen within a year. Anyway, we got more Twitter news and the get your shit together. Apparently Elon has decided to fuck with the fucking custodial staff at the fucking Twitter building because of course he has.
Yeah, get your shit together and don't treat the people who work with your shit badly.
Trash talk at Twitter tonight, but it doesn't involve any posts. Janitors at the San Francisco headquarters are the latest to lose their jobs.
This comes on the same day another group of fired workers announced a new legal action against Twitter and Elon Musk. Here's NBC Bay Area Sergio Quintana.
Twitter headquarters has been the site of several protests and demonstrations over the years, but this is the first time we're seeing employees on a picket line. Janitors who usually clean Twitter's headquarters now say they've been locked out since Friday and had no warning.
Our cleaning contractor, uh, at Twitter was told by Twitter that they are cutting the contract, so all, we have about 48 families out of work. Um, and it just so happens that it's three weeks before Christmas.
They say they'd like to talk to Twitter's new owner about all this, but haven't heard any kind of response. This very vocal picket outside of San Francisco Twitter headquarters isn't the only effort that employees are taking against the company's new owner. Meanwhile, in Los Angeles, attorney Lisa Bloom announced she is taking legal action on behalf of three former Twitter employees who describe anxiety and chaos once Elon Musk took over.
At a certain point, I was told as a manager that I might get fired if I gather my team just to hear their questions or concerns.
I watched as my laptop shut down at 9:00 PM and all of my access get revoked.
Attorney Lisa Bloom also says Twitter promised severance packages to employees ahead of the Musk takeover, but haven't delivered on those promises. The attorney even held up a sink as a prop during today's presser, much like Musk used when he first took over Twitter. Now she's urging more employees to come forward.
We are hitting Twitter and Elon with every applicable claim from promissory estoppel to breach of contract, to breach of their implied agreement, to violation of the Warren Act, to civil rights violations, everything but the kitchen sink.
Back at Twitter headquarters, the janitors' union says.
It looks more like a bathroom sink, to be honest with you.
Saying Elon Musk has been staying at the offices recently and they want to get his attention. As for the other people who live nearby, they apologize for the noise.
We're not asking for a handout, but what we will ask the neighbors in front of Twitter is put yourself in our shoes too.
In San Francisco, Sergio Quintana, NBC Bay Area News.
It seems like the only people left at Twitter are people able to fire other people.
And they don't have anywhere to put their trash now, apparently.
Yeah, I don't know. That's, that seems like a weird move. It seems like, why would you fire the janitorial staff? Like.
Oh, I can take out my own trash. It's okay. I can, I can clean up my own bathroom.
I mean, they're just going to end up hiring another, like another, like, this is a heavily unionized industry. I think he fucking fired them because they're in a union, honestly.
Correct. I mean, they're, they're wearing purple, the purple shirt says it all. It's SEIU, no doubt. So, uh, they, uh, they were, sorry, the Service Employees International Union, which represents janitors, um, in a variety of spaces. I didn't realize they represented so many private sector janitors. That's great. Um, uh, they represent janitorial staff at the, at airports, uh, public service, you know, agencies. Um, yeah, so they're definitely unionized and I'm sure that Elon doesn't like that at all.
No, he, he, uh, he almost got himself in trouble when he basically said that, you know, you may not start a union here at Tesla and that's, you actually may not tell your staff that.
Well, well, now that I'm thinking about it, I mean, I don't know that these people, folks are unionized at Twitter because if he was able to fire them and just like remove them unilaterally, that would not happen in a union shop. So I'm get, what I'm guessing is that SEIU is stepping up for these people and, and coming out to, to organize with them in an attempt to organize them and get them to sign on with SEIU. Um, and they do. Yeah, because he wouldn't be able to lay them off just unilaterally if, without cause if, um, if they were represented.
Huh, yeah.
That's why, that's why you have it, that's why you have a union, but that's also why private sector unions have been crushed over the past 30 years by Republicans in office because of that very reason, they don't want their private sector friends, CEO friends to have to deal with pesky, you know, union contracts.
Right, because that lady mentioned that they work for a contractor and that they were, the contractor was told that the contract, so I wonder, I wonder if, wonder if the contract wasn't over and he's, they're going to end up getting sued just for breaching the contract, just regardless of unionization.
Yeah, no, it could, it could very well be, although even, you know, the Good Wife will tell you that, you know, no contract is worth the paper it's printed on, really? You can, a good lawyer can find their way around any contract. So we'll see. Um, but we'll definitely keep tabs on it because I absolutely respect, I've, I've worked alongside these folks, I've organized with them, I've marched on this, or with them and janitors, not in these janitors necessarily, but with janitors in Santa Clara County and in Silicon Valley at the tech companies. So, uh, this is definitely an issue we should keep, keep our, uh, our nose to.
Yeah, and I, I mean, he's just going to end up, the, the thing is, he's going to end up hiring like just more like janitorial staff or trying to contract out again, but I, I get the feeling that it's, he's going to probably end up paying more because whatever, like, whatever contractor goes in there is just going to have a lot of leverage, I think, because there's nobody there right now. So they're going to be like, oh, well, you don't have anyone, sir. Right. Or whoever they're talking to, sir, ma'am, whoever they're speaking with, they're not going to be negotiating directly with Elon.
Right, what's your option? You know, you don't have an option.
Right, right. You know, we, uh, you know, we saw what you did to the last people who were here, so we're going to charge you more and you're going to have to pay these, you know, we're going to, everybody's going, you, you know.
Sorry.
Yes, yes, sorry. I, because I don't, yeah, I don't think there's a lot of options and I don't think, the last thing I think that you would want to do in his shoes or in the shoes of Twitter would be to hire people yourself and then have to basically hire up, uh, a whole segment of HR just to deal with this particular, uh, contingent of your workforce. Because that's what you'd have to do, right? They would have to have management, they'd have to, they'd have to be a part of HR that deals with that management, deals with the people who do that work. And so you just.
Absolutely.
Like, what? My immediate thought was that he fired them because they were in a union, but now that you mention it, maybe that's not it. And I don't know why, would, like, why would you?
Why would he thought he can get, maybe he thinks he can get a better deal. Maybe he's already talking to another contractor, right? And, and trying to, or, I mean, he should have done that before he fired the original contractor, but, um, maybe he's just trying to get somewhere else and get it cheaper. Or he's just a fucking arrogant rich prick who doesn't realize, you know, the value of a good janitorial staff and what they actually do, right? And, and that's realized that service employees and, um, the people that he, you know, maybe he doesn't, he thinks are inferior, I don't know. They're the backbone of any industry, of any business, or the people on the front lines, the people that keep the infrastructure running. The, the danger, most dangerous strike I saw at Kaiser wasn't doctors or, or mental health professionals, it was the electricians. It was when the, the, um, the support staff, the, uh, the engineering staff went on strike. And those are the folks that keep the, you know, all the dials moving, all the power on, all the, you know, the boiler room boiling, you know? Uh, so if they, if they're on strike, if they're not maintaining the ship, the hospital could fall apart and then where are you, right? No matter if you have 10 million nurses and doctors, right? If you have no power, you can't do shit. So, um, people need to start, you know, the CEOs need to start respecting their, the folks at the, what they would consider the bottom rung, right? But to me, it's like the top, like they, they, they run the show. Um, if they walk away, the whole thing falls apart.
So with dramatically less employees, you may need dramatically less support staff uh, in, with dramatically less engineers or, or the kinds of people that Elon thinks should work at Twitter, you might need dramatically less of them, but that doesn't mean you should fire all of them.
Sure, they're making less poop, that's for sure, but you still need someone. Yeah, absolutely.
And that's, you know, that's, this, you know, the contractor or whatever, it may have been for a certain number of people and he may be like, well, now that I've gotten rid of all, all these people, I can, uh, you know, I can, I can hire a smaller team. You'd think that with, if you were like a decent human being though, you'd be like, hey, you know, we have a lot less staff here and we're, we're going to have a lot less needs. Is there any way we can kind of rework this in such a way that, you know, some of your people do get to keep their jobs because they've been doing a good job here by, you know, by all accounts, but that's not how Elon rolls.
Like, that does not strike me as the way that he negotiates. No, not at all. Um, he just decides, he, he burns, he scorches the earth and then he figures it out from there.
And that, that thing mentioned that like the people who were promised severance, the severance isn't forthcoming, well, that's because the people who were promised severance or the people who might've dealt with the severance were among those waiting for their severance.
Right.
There's like, like, there's all kinds of problems going to happen and we're going to, we're, we're going to probably do a little deeper dive on our, how the tech are you pretty soon about like, he's fired like compliance office people? Like, so they're going to have real problems with the EU pretty soon because there's a lot more regulation around privacy and your data in the EU. And if he canned all those people, well, the EU's coming for him, right? And the EU, the, the EU don't care. There ain't no tax base in the EU that Twitter is helping prop up with their high paid employees and whatnot. So the EU's coming for this guy and.
Money better.
And they, they're, they're not kind to Silicon Valley tech companies if they cross the EU. So it'll be interesting to watch. We'll probably cover very little of it here on Down Ballot, but it'll be definitely part of the coverage on our tech news show called How the Tech Are You. So we're gonna move on to Down Ballot Watch. It seems like we have a tie in a Richmond City Council race and.
Oh, yeah.
Based on the still that I have here, it looks like people are fairly good natured about it. Let's hope that's the case.
Results are in. The city of Richmond's hotly contested District Two City Council race is a tie. So now the winner will be decided by a drawing. As NBC Bay Area's Jody Hernandez reports, the two candidates will square off in a game of chance. The Contra Costa County Register of Voters Office certified the election results this afternoon, and that Richmond City Council race indeed ended in a tie. Now the winner will be decided by the luck of a draw.
I've put a lot of time and energy and money into the campaign, you know, over many months. And to think that, that all that would ultimately come down to purely the luck of the draw or a game of chance is kind of mind boggling.
You know, even though it's stressful, uh, so there's definitely a little bit of stress, but it's also exciting. Exciting because we get to see democracy working.
Richmond City Council candidates Andrew Butt and Caesar Cepeda are both on pins and needles after learning the result of their Richmond District Two City Council race is a tie.
After we canvassed every eligible ballot, each candidate has received 1,921 votes. So it is the tie vote at 1921 to 1921.
Contra Costa County's Assistant Register of Voters says it's now up to the city of Richmond to break that tie. According to a city resolution, the city clerk shall place the name of each candidate in a sealed, unmarked envelope, and the tie vote shall be broken by lot.
And now it's gonna be resolved by putting our names in a green envelope. And the city clerk, the Richmond city clerk will be the one that will select the envelope out of the bag. And then that person is gonna be the elected council member.
It's a 20 sided die. It's not loaded.
It's not the first time a game of chance has been used to break an election tie in Contra Costa County. In 2018, a game of dice decided the.
Remember that?
When the race for the Byron Bethany.
We covered it.
District Director ended neck and neck.
Every single vote counts. If one vote had been different back in 2018, the tiebreaker never would have happened. If one vote had been different yesterday in our final canvas of the votes in the city of Richmond, we wouldn't have a tie today.
The tiebreaker is expected to take place next week. Both men hope Lady Luck is on their side. In Contra Costa County, Jody Hernandez, NBC Bay Area News.
Yeah. What I liked about that is they got the two candidates together and they were kind of joking about it and they seemed kind of cordial with one another. And although like, if you plan on doing anything in the future, how else would you want to appear about this?
Mm hmm.
But it's, it seemed, it seemed like even if they had a hotly contested race or whatever, it seems like they were both pretty good natures, natured about it. And they were willing to appear on camera and they were both smiling and their body language was friendly. So.
Good to see. I mean, they're neighbors at the end of the day, right? So then they got it. And more than likely, you're right. Like in the future, whether or not they're running for office again in the future, or one of them decides to, the, the, the quote unquote loser decides to run for office in the future for something else. These, the type of folks that run for city council are engaged in the community and it's a very small circle of people, right? So you see them all the time. They're in your network. It's like, it, it really doesn't make any sense to have a lot of vitriol built up for people except for Evil Beto, um, who are in your network like that all the time and who you have to work with, right? And collaborate with occasionally and occasionally who you do agree with, right? And they probably have a lot of places where they agree. So yeah, uh, I, I think it's great to see them so cordial. I do remind everyone, you know, this is a great reminder, actually. You, you think your vote doesn't count, right? Fuck you. Your vote counts. Every fucking vote counts. So fucking vote every time. And as literally as we were going through this story, the good wife sends me a photo, a screenshot of Sunnyville City Council, District Three, the latest count, tied. 5,600 total votes, 2811 to 2811. So anything's possible. They're still counting. It's not quite certified yet, but tied. So there will be a recount. But every vote absolutely counts. Don't ever let anyone tell you your vote doesn't count.
Our next story on Down Ballot Watch is it looks like Santa Clara County families uh, might receive some UBI depending on uh, probably their income and probably some other unfair messed up factor. But we'll let the, uh, yeah, we'll let the local news, let the local news tell us about this one.
Oh, okay. Santa Clara County launching a guaranteed income program starting this December. Some families will receive a thousand dollars a month for two years. KTVU South Bay reporter La Monica Peters explains how this pilot program works.
At the end of the day, we want to make sure that families in Santa Clara County are not homeless, have the resources they need to meet their needs. We're not contributing to generational poverty or seeing more people fall into homelessness.
The Silicon Valley Guaranteed Income Pilot Program says it'll target people of color, undocumented and mixed status families and women led households. 150 families will get $1,000 a month for two years with no strings attached. Data shows the average rent in Silicon Valley is $2,850 and families need to make over $54 an hour to afford that.
It might represent from 30 to 50% of their income, you know, just to pay the rent. And so do I, you know, this month, do I pay the rent or do I feed my children? And these are the kinds of questions that they, you know, talk about, um, that they face, you know, every month.
The program will be led by Destination Home, Cise Puede Collective, and other agencies, including Santa Clara County. Dr. Scott Myers Lipton is co-author of the Silicon Valley Pain Index and says guaranteed income programs have been proven to work.
It allows for folks who are just scraping by in that bottom 20% to have some of the basics of, that we would say that is part of this American life and culture.
The project is being supported by private funders, including Google.org, the Packard Foundation, Silicon Valley Community Foundation, and Sobrato Philanthropies. UCSF will also conduct a study to show how the money impacts families over the next two years. La Monica Peters, KTVU Fox Two News.
That's great.
Yeah. I, I would have had this under winners and losers, I was gonna say, but we just had too many winners under winners and losers this week. So I didn't want to overdo it. Um, cause really we gotta get back to our roots with that, that segment. But, um, yeah. Uh, that's, it's good news. Uh, it's great to see it's coming to Santa Clara County. Um, I was aware of this rolling out. I didn't know when it was gonna actually launch, but um, and the good wife was certainly aware of it as well, given her, her day job. So, um, yeah. Kudos to all the partners. Um, saw my buddy Chad, who's a former college classmate of mine, um, uh, who's representing for Destination Home now. So, uh, yeah, happy to track this and see how it goes. And I certainly won't qualify for it. Um, I don't know if, Bruce Dave, if you would qualify for it, but, uh, uh, it's good to see it happening for the folks who do need it.
No, if I was trying to live on content creation, uh, that would be a deliverance. Um, but I am not. I'm not trying to live on content creation. Things are, uh, things are, things are pretty on the up and up now, especially with the, the decrease in rent and the generosity of the community around our Twitch streams, in addition to just other factors I've been able to, you know, things are, things are back to, things are back to normal on the, on the income side for me and my expenses are lower. So things are quite good. And I would, I'd still take the thousand dollars a month. That would increase my quality of life. I'd be able to go on vacation once in a while and stuff, but, uh, certainly there are people out there who need it more than I do.
So the, you're telling that the, the life of a gigolo is good these days?
It's great. It's great.
Fabulous. Uh, I, I see you on Grindr.
Don't knock the hustle.
How can I knock the hustle? Everybody got hustle. Everybody got hustle every day. All right. Well, speaking of hustle, let's hustle out of here and, and wrap it up with a, uh, one more thing. Uh, this is, again, so a story probably could have been on winners and losers. This is just sad. I feel so bad. But, um, and just a reminder that, you know, uh, good things happen, bad things happen to good people all the time and just be vigilant. And, and watch out for your shit when you're in Oakland.
So, um, I'm moving from San Diego to Portland and this was my overnight pit stop.
That pit stop in Oakland turned into a horrible experience for Tony. It was supposed to be a new beginning for the high end bicycle designer. He packed up everything he owned in this U-Haul van. He says it ended up like a bad dream.
Tony's halfway point from San Diego to Portland is here in North Oakland. He parked the van and U-Haul right over there. And when he got up in the morning, it was gone.
Anything from my pants to my trash can, to my computer, to my bed frame, literally just visualize any room in your house and whatever's in it is gone.
His entire life was inside this U-Haul, which includes family heirlooms from Germany. Also stolen, his vintage Volkswagen that was in tow. That was Saturday morning. After reporting the theft to police, he then took to social media for help.
Volkswagen groups, other, other areas of the internet that are all here to help. And slowly but surely it was shared, uh, multiplied pretty quickly. And then slowly I started getting some information. I'm like, hey, you should go look here. These are kind of the crime hotspots where stolen things get taken.
That information took Tony to the Wood Street Underpass this morning, a place where the unhoused live and fires have broken out in the past. Tony found his van there and called police.
They realized that there was somebody inside it. So, um, they called in reinforcements and it ended up being several squad cars and about a two hour standoff.
Tony took this video of police pulling a squatter out of his stolen van. It was ransacked. All of his belongings gone. The U-Haul truck with an Arizona license plate and a distinctive bird on the side of it is still missing. Also gone, a couple of very expensive handmade bicycles, each worth up to $17,000.
Everyone has been like, I'm really sorry this happened. This is, this is not Oakland. This is not Berkeley. This is not what we want.
Tony feels a lot of gratitude for all the help from total strangers. All he wants now are his belongings back. In Oakland Troll Herd, NBC Bay Area News.
He got his van back. Those bikes, if they're custom, they may eventually get found, but things like his computer and shit, that shit's never coming back.
Yeah, it's unfortunate. I'm sharing this, my brush also is a PSA. So if anyone happens to know anything at all out there in Down Ballot Land, please, um, alert, uh, this dude or the news or law enforcement. Um, but yeah, again, uh, it's, uh, it's a jungle out there and you gotta be vigilant and be prepared for anything. Um, and I just feel awful for, for this dude. It's like your whole life wrapped up in a car.
It's also a little odd to me and maybe, you know, maybe this will start happening in the future. Like people put all their belongings in these like U-Haul vans. You would think that there would be an alarm on the van.
Hmm.
There'd be like an alarm, like in these, I would, in fact, any, uh, any entrepreneurs out there, if you're thinking about starting a, starting a company, maybe you start a company like U-Haul where there's, you're, you have the ability to remotely disable the vehicle. You have the ability to track the vehicle that you rented. You.
Yeah.
Just put a security system in that vehicle and you'd be able to charge a bit of a premium, I think, for people who are moving, who might have to stay the night at a hotel or whatever. And, uh, yeah, put a loud ass alarm on that vehicle. Um, make it so you can't start the vehicle without a Bluetooth connection from the phone that it was, you know, registered from. You know, there are a number of technological solutions to this where somebody would then have to be viewed on the, the side of the road with the alarm going off, removing the, the items from the back of the thing. And they're likely to get caught in that scenario. Now, it's not U-Haul's fault that this happened. Obviously the thief is at fault. And it's not this person's fault for not getting a, like a U-Haul type replacement with a security system in it. But there, if you're an entrepreneur out there, uh, that this would be, this is a, this is a great, this is like a great opportunity, I think, for someone.
They call it a market inefficiency. Um, but yes, absolutely. It would be a great tool to offer. Um, I, I think rental car companies have this kind of technology. I think U-Haul, if, if anyone's rented a U-Haul recently, like most of those trucks are pretty low rent, like they're, they're, uh, uh, you know, from, from the very old trucks, right? Or they're very baseline trucks, like the, whatever the bare bones coming off the assembly line is. So they don't have all the bells and whistles, unfortunately, but that's a fantastic idea. I think that'd be great, that's great something to offer. So I'm glad we can end the show on an up note. I realized that was kind of a depressing story to, to end with, but.
That is. And not for nothing, you can retrofit an old vehicle with all this stuff.
It's, no, no, absolutely. Absolutely. And not so much, I, I didn't want to imply old is, uh, just, um, you know, baseline model, right? Like it could be the, the newest line, but like not, no bells and whistles, like roll up windows and, you know, uh, just AM FM radio, you know, no, no, no satellite radio, obviously. And the, the old analog, you know, speedometer.
Well, yeah, that was a depressing way to end the show, but whatever. Uh, thanks, I guess, podcast listeners and, uh, thanks to everybody who usually watches live. Um, this won't be out in time, but, uh, Local Love, make sure you check the pod of Local Love out. Uh, we bought some new equipment, did some work around the studio. We have Sweet Hyah coming in. It'll be the largest number of musicians playing at once ever on Local Love. And, uh, we'll see how that goes. Councilman, you want to read out Down Ballot?
Absolutely. Thank you so much, listener, for downloading and sharing with your friend. Uh, we really appreciate both of you for, for being here for us. Everyone else, what are you doing? Share the show. Get out there. Um, get yourself vaxxed, wear a mask. Pants are optional. And we'll see you next week at the usual time and place and channel. Thank you.